Good morning. Today is the second day of spring, March twenty first, and it's raining. It snowed a little last night. The time is nine o'clock, and the Ada County Commissioners Board is in session. Two Commissioners present. Commissioner Daley is absent. Appreciate this. He's learning all there is to know about BOE. With the state tax commission. So, anyway, we wish him well. Could you introduce yourself as we go around for the record? We're here.
Jeremiah Cameron, Operations.
Bethany Calley, HR.
Mike Work, Operations.
Sean Hinkins, Clerk's Office.
Deborah Hope, Ada County Operations.
Brad Smith, Assessor's Office.
Josh Brown, Operations.
Michelle Klein, Public Services.
Saul Seiler, Ada County Elections.
Ms. Hannah, Procurement, Intern.
Ms. Hannah, Procurement.
Bob Perkins, Ada County Procurement.
Elizabeth Duncan, Communication.
Hi, T guy.
Beth Maugh, Treasure.
Trent Tripleclerk.
Hey, we, we have a full contingent. Thank you for being here. Madam Clerk, are there changes to the agenda?
No, there are not.
Okay, we have new business. We have, first up is a resolution. I will open the public hearing on Resolution two eight four eight. A resolution for sole source procurement of upgraded equipment for the Ada County Jail system and associated licenses and video storage for year two thousand twenty three. Is there any comment on it? Yes, go ahead.
This is Mr. Chairman, Commissioners. This is a sole source for a upgrade of equipment at the Ada County Sheriff's Jail. This is a continuation of their security upgrade to include a video management system. And this will be able to also upgrade video cameras as well.
Okay, is there any other discussion? Hearing none, I'll close the public hearing on two eight four eight. Is there a motion?
Mr. Chair, I'd move to approve Resolution two eight four eight as listed on the agenda.
I'll second the motion. All in favor, say aye. Aye?
Aye.
Motion carries. Thank you. Moving on, we have a change order. A change order number ten, Ada County Coroner's Replacement Facility Agreement number fourteen five seven oh, increase four hundred thousand dollars. Anyone want to speak to that one?
This is how we wrap up the part of the number slightly had errors for contingency with this plan. So my work really had to keep our costs in line and get credits where we could get back. But yeah, I just need a wee bit more.
A wee bit more?
A wee bit more, yeah.
Okay, so it's scheduled to open on first of August.
Sorry?
Scheduled to open on first of August?
The coroner's building?
Yeah.
No, no, not December. Oh, cheeky.
So when, when is the projected open day?
December.
December, okay.
December.
Okay.
We are, there are a couple of things that we are chill, air handlers are running a little bit light and switch it in, which is unfortunately it's common in the atmosphere of construction. So we're fingers crossed we will be open in December.
Okay, good enough. Well, I accept the motion on the change order number ten.
Mr. Chair, I move to approve change order number ten, Ada County Coroner's Replacement Facility as listed on the agenda and authorize the chair to sign the documents on behalf of the board.
I'll second the motion. All in favor, say aye. Aye?
Aye.
Motion carries. Thank you. Next, we have a change order number one for Ada County Juvenile Services Staff Exercise Facility. Number agreement number one four three five three four, a decrease of thirty six hundred dollars. Okay, anybody speak to that one here?
We finally got this one wrapped up. Another situation where it took a really long time to get the equipment in. So yeah, happy to get this one and get some money back for the damn amount.
Okay, thank you. Welcome to our meeting. I'll accept the motion.
Mr. Chair, I'll move to approve change order number one, Ada County Juvenile Services Staff Exercise Facility as listed on the agenda and authorize the chair to sign the documents on behalf of the board.
I'll second the motion. All in favor, say aye. Aye?
Aye.
Motion carries. Moving on, we have licenses. I'll accept the motion. We have four transfers, thirty five renewals. Is there a motion?
Mr. Chair, I'll move to approve the licenses as listed on the agenda, including four license transfers and thirty five license renewals and authorize the chair to sign the documents on behalf of the board.
I'll second the motion. All in favor, say aye. Aye?
Aye.
Thank you. Motion carries. Okay, we have Clerk's Office with us. Mr. Trent Triple.
Mr. Chair, Commissioners, our, our report is simple. We're moving ahead with everything that we've got on our plate, which is a lot. But we were able to get one thing off our plate, and that was the election for the Kuna School Board. So that's what's before you. Saul can explain kind of the outcome of the election and how it turned out. Saul, would you like to say a few words about it?
Thank you, Trent. Mr. Chair, Commissioners. So it was actually a very successful election in terms of turnout for a school bond election. When we look back, there were similar elections in March of two thousand nineteen and March of twenty one. This was by far the highest turnout in all three categories of Election Day, absentee, and early voting. So there was clearly interest in this. Ultimately, the bond did not pass. And this is a shared school district with Ada County. It didn't pass in either county. As I understand it, the Kuna School Board is looking at options moving forward, but it wasn't a successful election. And I'm proud of the team for being able to pull it off.
Okay.
Any questions?
What was the percentage turnout for Kuna?
For Kuna, we had fourteen point four percent, just about twenty five hundred voters, which actually for an off-cycle school bond is surprisingly good. Twenty twenty one was only eight percent, just above eight percent. So a solid turnout when you look at that from that perspective.
Any idea why there's more turnout this, on this one? Was it the amount to the bond, or did you see more campaigning?
You know, I think actually the Kuna School Board was very proactive in community, which they held north of forty meetings prior to this bond. So there's definitely more community engagement from that perspective. But that's, that is what I would suspect to be possible.
Okay. Mr. Clerk, are we supposed to just accept this, or?
We should have the motion there.
I'll make a motion, Mr. Chair.
Thank you.
So I'll move pursuant to Idaho Code thirty one dash eight oh four and thirty four dash one two oh five, which requires the Board of Commissioners to canvass the election returns to certify the election results as presented by the Clerk's Office for the Kuna School District Bond Election held on March fourteenth, two thousand twenty three.
Okay, I will second the motion. All in favor, say aye. Aye?
Aye.
We're done canvassing. Okay, thank you. Now we have the Claims Journal before us. Is there a motion in the Claims Journal?
Mr. Chair, I move to authorize payment of claims on the Claims Journal dated March seventeenth, two thousand twenty three.
I'll second the motion. All in favor, say aye. Aye?
Aye.
Motion carries. We have Personnel Actions.
Yes, Mr. Chair, I move to approve the Personnel Actions as listed on the agenda and that the summary sheet remain on file in the Commissioner's Office.
I'll second the motion. All in favor, say aye. Aye?
Aye.
We have with us our Assessor. You have a good report for us?
Good morning.
Morning.
We are certainly busy over in the Assessor's Office. We've processed about twenty five hundred property tax reduction applications so far, and we have just about a month to go, so. And we will be seeing you a little bit later to talk about motor vehicles and admin fees.
Okay. Did you analyze the new tax bill that has some new duties for the Assessor to do? The Lieutenant's passing?
We did take a look at that. I didn't bring a summary with me, but if you.
No, do you think it's going to be having much additional cost or anything?
I hope not. We'll see.
All right. Okay, thank you. Okay, now we have with us our Treasurer's Office.
Good morning, Mr. Chair, Commissioner. We have been closely tracking House Bill two ninety two. Did pass the Senate yesterday, so expect this to become law. So this bill includes multiple things, but as pertains to the Treasurer's Office, property tax relief that will be on the two thousand twenty three bills that we send out this November. The bill is complicated. It's twenty pages long, includes some different topics. And then, as again, as it pertains to the tax notices, provides for the creation of two new funds. A school district facilities fund, but then also a homeowner's property tax relief account. And then there will be multiple sources of funds from sales tax, state surplus that will feed these funds and ultimately reduce the levies and the amounts that taxpayers will see on their two thousand twenty three bills. So like I said, it is complicated, but it will provide relief. It's going to involve a lot of collaboration and coordination between Assessor Clerk Tax Commission and the Treasurer's Office. These are tight deadlines. As my staff knows, the first week of November, I'm on pins and needles trying to get our data so that we can create these notices. So we're going to have to be a well-oiled machine between all of these different offices. I did already meet with IT. They will have some work to help with the programming on all of this. So that's what we're doing, is we're just following this closely to figure out the best way to implement that this November.
Does it actually reduce the levies, or does it, or does it allow for some refunds?
Mr. Chair, my understanding is that it reduces the levies.
Okay. Okay, well, that's going to be an interesting one. I notice you're, you need to put a couple of extra lines on the tax bills.
Sure, that is correct. There will be additional line to show the relief. You know, it seems like a line is a line, but that requires oftentimes for the different tax collections, new notices, you know, their new stationery, the new forms, their new programming. But, you know, we did something similar when we implemented the Public Safety Grant Initiative.
Cares?
The cares funds. We did something similar, so, and we pulled that off and confident we can do it this year again.
Yeah, that's, there's a similar line on there, isn't there?
Just a different entity.
Exactly. Exactly. Okay, well, thank you. Thank you. We wish you well.
Thank you.
Both of you. You got some extra work to do. Okay, thank you. Okay, we have Human Resources. We have Beckonies here.
Hi, Chairman, Commissioner Davidson. This is, I'm just bringing back to you, about a year ago, a group of county leaders got together to discuss some incentives to help with our hiring and recruiting. That resulted in opportunities for referral bonus for employees for a thousand dollars per candidate that they successfully recruit when that employee finishes two pay periods. It has been renewed to prior times. Our current totals, we're at fifty five, have been hired off of that, and our success rate with those individuals is very high. And it's also been a very wide range of positions, everything from attorneys to weed, pest, mosquito, to healthcare profession positions that are very hard to fill as well. I am here to ask for approval for this to continue. I would come back next week and have a resolution on your agenda for you to vote on extending the program. I would request that it be extended through the end of the fiscal year this year, and then we'll again come back and revisit that with you at a future time.
Okay, and you'll bring the, the resolution for us?
Yes, sir.
Okay. All right. Any discussion?
I'm just curious if any of the department heads or elected officials have made use of this provision, or had employees that made use of it? And, or what, what the thought of the people who actually have to hire people around here is?
Mr. Chairman, Commissioner, Operations has taken advantage of it. We've hired a couple of people and great employees.
Been beneficial?
Yes.
All right. All right, well, I'd say get your resolution ready.
Thank you, sir.
Okay, thank you. We now have approval of the minutes. I'll accept a motion.
I move to approve the minutes as identified on the agenda and authorize the chair to sign the documents on behalf of the board.
I'll second the motion. Is there discussion? Hearing none? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Okay, we have now a release of a couple of liens for weed and pest. Is there a motion?
I move to approve two releases of lien for weed and pest as listed on the agenda and authorize the chair to sign the documents on behalf of the board.
I'll second the motion. All in favor, say aye. Aye?
Aye.
Motion carries. All right, we have six interim events at Expo Idaho. Any question or discussion about the events?
No.
Okay, I'll accept a motion.
I move to approve the six interim event agreements as listed on the agenda and authorize the chair to sign the documents on behalf of the board.
I'll second the motion. All in favor, say aye. Aye?
Aye.
Motion carries. Thank you. Next, we have an agreement between Ada County and the Ada County Law Foundation for High School Mock Trials. This actually has already happened, but we're just putting it on the record that we approved it. I'll accept the motion.
Mr. Chair, I move to approve and ratify Agreement number one five one nine three, signed by the board on three sixteen twenty three, and approve the, you know, I'll just make the motion for that one.
Thank you. I'll second the motion. All in favor, say aye. Aye?
Aye.
Thank you. We now have ten agreements. I've reviewed the agreements and I don't have any issues with them. Is there a motion?
Mr. Chair, I move to approve the remaining ten agreements as listed on the agenda and authorize the chair to sign the appropriate documents on behalf of the board.
I'll second the motion. All in favor, say aye. Aye?
Aye.
Motion carries. And finally, we have the Indigent Services, weekly indigent items.
Mr. Chair, I move to accept the recommendations of the Indigent Services Staff as listed on the summary of cases dated March twenty first, two thousand twenty three, and authorize the chair to sign the documents on behalf of the board.
I'll second the motion. All in favor, say aye. Aye?
Aye.
Unless there's any further business. Is there any further business that we need to take up? Hearing none, we're in recess. Thank you.